I have six thirty-six, they say that that's wrong, I guess maybe six thirty-three, is that sound about right? I'll call the meeting to order, would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Fuller, would you please raise your pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Dave. Agenda review, any discussion on the agenda? I have. Under any other business. We should set the schedule for the election of officers following the town selection. So that choice on that, we usually have done that on a Thursday. Following the vote on Tuesday. And we could, we can have a meeting and do it that way, or we can just carry over to the next meet, the next regularly scheduled meeting and make it the first part of business. And if you want to do that, I'd be willing to work with the town manager to set up your agenda, you Nate, you're. If you're, you'd still be the vice chair at that point, I'm the chair up until that point, it just to carry over between to that meeting. To help set the agenda and then turn it over after the pledge, turn it over to the town manager for the election of officers. Or we can have the special meeting on the Thursday, whatever you.
I think it makes, for me, I think it makes sense to do the special meeting.
Okay. Okay, so, so set the reorder, so we, we'll, we'll take care of that when we get to any other business. Anything else, anything under the agenda, anybody else? I apologize, I don't feel all that well, that's, it's been a rough last week with the, with the flu. Good stuff, good stuff. No, no, nothing on the agenda, comments from select board, town managers, citizens topics not on the agenda. Comments from the select board.
It's nice to see so many people here to send me off.
We're just making sure you leave, Dave.
So, so I had a suggestion for Brandon earlier, and you know, that was that I would just stay home and let two other people that are pretty well at it to share this chair. I thought that was, I thought that was a really good idea. Thank you, the whole town, I, I know that there are a lot of people online for naming me for whatever reason you had for citizen of the year. Our farm is really important to us and couldn't have done it without my family. And I know my dad's looking down because he was sitting in this chair before me and I'm so happy that my daughter also served on the school board. So it's been, it's been a blast. I'm not going anywhere, at least for now, I'd like to go see my son because he's pretty much on fire and. He's everywhere in the country. I do have one other thing, Mike, and that is that I, it seems to be, if there is any confusion, I'd like to settle this about my position about Article seven. So I don't know if you want to take that up on the other business or something like that, or, or I'd be happy to combine that if you wanted to with the town manager's presentation, but, but it's different than his. So I don't know where you want to fit that in.
Um, is that, is that a discussion of the agenda item for Saturday? Or that you're talking about, or is it like, you, you want to talk about doing a presentation on Saturday?
No, no, I just, I want to clear up, I mean, it seems to be a lot of confusion with the, with the meetings on January ninth and fourteenth and. Special article warning and, you know, so I want that all clear, I'm, I'm not Mr. Bashful, as people know, and, and I have a lot of reasons for what I'd like to say, so.
Would, but would, I guess, but my question within is, would that better serve the town at town meeting day rather than tonight, I'm not sure tonight's the time to talk about.
One of the issues like, so it's, and it's kind of the same thing of why I think like a lot of people here is because of if people are voting by absentee. So it, it's kind of good to. I, you know, I wanted to use this opportunity for me, it's my last meeting, I don't want to go out with people not knowing what I think. But other, other business is fine with me too.
Dave, I wouldn't believe it falls under comments because it's not related to an agenda item, right?
Well, it is related to agenda item because it's part of the town meeting and the town meeting has the warning and, and the, the articles, so it is.
Um, I, I, I'm wondering if I'm picking up where you're coming from, which is. If it's under comments, it's comments from Dave and it's not a debate on the floor, if you put it under other business, does it open up a debate?
I wouldn't think so, I mean, I, you know, I, I would quickly add one thing, I mean, I, I was, I've had a chance to look at at least some of the tape. From the. February tenth meeting, is it? No, the tenth, is it February tenth, I had to do, so it's a meeting that I missed, I mean. I did post something up on, I, I never, I don't have my own Facebook site, I use my wife's, isn't that fun? So I'd be happy to say why I couldn't make that meeting, but I was referenced in the meeting like four or five times that, that a lot of this would have been stopped, Dave was here. Dave is not some magical dust. And Candy's mom passed away and I stayed home. She's a woman that's been in my life for forty-one years and that's way more important than this town to me. So that's why I didn't, I don't want people to be confused about why I didn't make the meeting. So, you know, having said that, I, I still think I can.
I'm fine with it, I'm just trying to figure out where to put it.
Yeah, and that, and that's why I asked, figure out where you want.
If it's fire department related to be, I'm going to be discussing that under six E. That's where it makes sense to me.
You okay with that?
Yep, that's good, yep.
Okay. Any other comments from the select board?
I have one. Um, and I'm going to read it, even though I forgot my glasses.
Did you like, you need readers?
No, because it doesn't help me, it just makes me seasick, but um. I've been thinking about, you know, what to say in reference to the last meeting and maybe more importantly, how to say it for tonight's meeting. It is kind of ironic, I guess, that I've been sort of wanting an increase in public participation and yet we had to have an event. That causes damage to the community to get it, right? So I do want to start by thanking the veterans committee for their service, in particular, I'd like to recognize Alison Roth, Dylan Brown, and DeForest Beer, who stepped down from the committee. During and after the last select board meeting. I'm, I'm deeply saddened by the manner in which the dialogue unfolded around the veterans committee, which I can only assume has led to each of you feeling the need to step down. The charge of the veterans committee really revolves around remembering and respecting our veterans, which is intended to bring us together as a community. I do hope in time healing can happen and that each of you can see a path forward in, in this work. I do want to apologize for my part. In not stepping, stopping the dialogue once it had moved from speaking of the issue at hand. To a form of dialogue that no longer was about volunteering or governmental accountability. We have a board policy for addressing informal, informal complaints and we, that should have been our path forward. I believe it's important for members of the community to question their town governments, push for accountability, but I also. Feel it's incumbent upon us all to maintain civil discourse, working together through conflict, I believe makes us stronger as a community. I want to urge fellow board members and, and participating public that you should speak your beliefs, but do it through civil discourse and allow us as a board to take our time. That we need to make our best decisions, none of us are perfect and, and hopefully we can learn from this.
Anything else from the board? Town manager?
I'm all set right now, I can, I can wait until six.
Comments from citizens, topics not on either. And, and as you see. Chief Dofflin. I mean, I'm sorry, Chief Dofflin's that one.
It's okay, Mike, it's okay, just go with Chief Josh, just go with Chief Josh.
A little slow up here.
For anybody who doesn't know me, my name's Josh Campo, I've been serving in the, in the fire service in town since two thousand and six. And I'm here to share a change at a scutney fire. Chief Gurney appointed me to the remainder of his term on Friday afternoon. He is going to be chasing some, some other life dreams that is going to limit his ability to lead the fire department. And in that has appointed me for the remainder of that term. I come to you just in an act of transparency and, and to say I look forward to working with the town and Chief Doffin on continuing, continuing to improve the fire service in the town of Weathersfield.
Thank you. Congratulations, I guess if that's. Any other comments, citizens, Josh Dofflin?
Good evening, I would like to publicly thank former chief Gurney. For the last ten months of the transition period that a scutney fire has gone through. It, it is, I'm sure he will contest that it's, it was a big change. That he got thrown into and I wish him all the best, I do look forward with working with Chief Campo. For the next however long, we are working together and working toward segueing into a municipal department. But I'd like to congratulate Chief Campo and I do think that anybody that does see Chief Gurney. That we thank him for his time of stepping up and being chief, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Anyone else?
Mike, do we know that the online is like, or?
Lot there too.
No, but I've heard a little disruption, so can we make sure that they mute and that they can hear us and that we can hear them, can we test that?
I'll leave that to you, Olivia. Dylan Brown, can you hear us? Chip, Chip is a colonel, right, John? Was a colonel, huh?
Do you have?
This is Dylan Brown, yeah, can hear you guys, it's, it's clear.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, hearing none, review minutes of previous meeting? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of two ten? Twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
Are you a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the minutes of two ten. Any discussion on those minutes?
I just wanted, I, I complimented Nikki over the weekend, but I thought she did a magnificent job of just stilling that last meeting down. Was quite remarkable and thanks again.
Yes, I, I concur, any, any directions for the minutes? No discussion? During no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes two ten twenty-five, signify by saying aye? Any opposed and any abstentions? Dave Fuller has abstained, it is, they, they passed four to one with one abstention. Town manager updates, response to alleged open meeting, well, town manager, your updates.
I'm going to stand up there so I can see everyone.
I think it's, well, you have a microphone anyway.
First, I want to thank everyone that came tonight. I've worked with many of you and appreciate the continued collaboration as we work together to make Weathersfield an excellent place to be. I understand there has been a lot of questions in the community, not only about the concerns that were raised, but also about the proposed change in our emergency services. My objective is to bring clarity to these topics and answer any questions you have related to these topics. On January twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, I received an email from Dr. August Murray raising concerns regarding. DeForest Beer's candidacy for select board. Following discussions with the currently seated select board, I was asked to compile a report and answer each of the concerns tonight in open meeting. The concerns raised are as follows, conflict of interest stemming from DeForest Beer's immediate family's employment with the town of Weathersfield. Number two, open meeting law violations. And number three, lack of accounting regarding the veterans memorial committee's use of town funds, which may necessitate a formal audit. I'm going to start first with the open meeting law violations. So in order to do this, you have to review quite a bit of meeting minutes and agendas to determine whether an open meeting law violation took place. So we performed a comprehensive review of the veterans memorial committee meeting minutes from March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Through February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five to determine compliance with the Vermont open meeting law. My review identified a total of fifteen instances where this three-year, during this three-year period. Where the committee did not comply with the open meeting law. By either failing to post meeting minutes to the veterans memorial committee page on the town's website within five days of the meeting. Or failing to post the agenda at least forty-eight hours in advance of the regularly scheduled meetings or twenty-four hours in advance of special meetings. The key priority in addressing any confirmed concern, concern is to resolve it, our suggested course of action is as follows. To require all members of town boards, committees and commissions and town employees involved in public meetings to attend open meeting law trainings. Although this concern is focused on the veterans memorial committee. We have seen instances of open meeting law violations throughout town, including right here on the select board. And that can be shown on Nancy Nudal McNamara's blog. She, she does a really good job keeping track of, of our meetings and there have been open meeting law violations posted there. And there's always room for improvement, so my. My recommended course of action is for everyone to become familiar with open meeting law, with the open meeting law again and undergo a training. And, and I recommend that we, we all do that by June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five. The goal of this training is to ensure all appointed and elected officials are trained in the open meeting law. To ensure that we comply with the legal requirements and maintain the public trust. So that was concern number one and that was, that was how we plan to address it, any questions on that?
Am I correct in thinking that we had also talked about having a designated person in, in town hall? Who would handle all of the warnings and things so that that was done consistently across all committees and?
Yeah, so, so over time, we've done it, we've done it different ways. For example, if we charge one person with doing it and that person's out sick or on vacation. It wouldn't be possible for that person to see their email and I think. We are not assigning blame with the veterans memorial committee meeting minutes or agendas not being posted on time. We're just looking to make sure that all committees, boards and commissions are trained, trained to understand the open meeting law and comply with it in the future. But I do agree that we do need some sort of. A really good system in place to ensure everything's posted on time. The second concern is whether DeForest Beer says an unavoidable conflict of interest due to her family members employment with the town. Initially, I want to make clear that the, the decision who should serve on the select board is up to the voters. It is also important that the voters have confidence that the select board is making decisions in the best interest of the town. So another important thing to understand is. Understanding the organizational structure for the town of Weathersfield and most municipalities that have a town manager form of government. The residents of Weathersfield elect five members of the select board, which are seated, seated here. And they act as the legislative body of the town. They adopt policies and act ordinances, set fiscal guidelines. The select board also appoints various boards, committees and commissions, among other things. The select board appoints me as the town manager. And the town manager is the chief administrative officer overseeing the day-to-day operations of the town. Including managing departments, implementing policies set by the elected select board, preparing the budget. And ensuring efficient use of town resources. The town manager appoints all department heads and other staff as needed to effectively manage the town. To respond to Mr. Murray's concern specifically, should DeForest be elected. Should be, should DeForest be elected, her position as a select board member alone would not present an unavoidable conflict with her involvement in all select board actions. There may however be circumstances where she would need to recuse herself from specific decisions. On January first, two thousand and twenty-five, Act one seventy-one, an act establishing a statewide municipal code of ethics. In Vermont went into effect and is found in chapter sixty of title twenty-four. And I'm just going to read everybody the definition of, of this so everyone understands. A direct or indirect interest of a municipal officer or such an interest known to the officer. Of a member of the officer's immediate family or household. Or of a business associate and the outcome of a particular matter pending before the officer or the officer's public body. Or that is in conflict with the proper discharge of the officer's duties. Conflict of interest does not include any interest that is not greater than that of other individuals generally affected by the outcome of a matter. And that comes from twenty-four VSA nineteen ninety-one five. The act also specifies a process for raising and reviewing potential conflicts of interests of its municipal officers. In this case, DeForest Beer's daughter Patience Beer works in the town's finance department and reports directly to the town manager. Similarly, DeForest's husband David Beer is employed by the town's highway department and reports to the highway superintendent. The highway superintendent in turn reports to the town manager. So what you're saying is, is layers in between a select board seat and the employees. The town manager then in turn reports to the five-member select board. But has authority to make decisions regarding town employees, including Patience Beer and David Beer without select board involvement. With this structure, there are one or more layers between DeForest, should she be elected to the board. And decisions over her family members' employment, thus limiting the opportunities for a direct, direct conflict of interest. However, should there be a matter or decision that comes before the select board? And, and keep in mind here, we're, we're talking directly about this situation here, but this really goes for any select board member that's seated. Should a matter or decision come before the select board that directly involves her family members or otherwise creates a direct. Or indirect conflict of interest as defined by state law. She and the select board as a whole will need to assess the potential conflict and comply with the municipal code of ethics. And that may require her to recuse herself from certain decisions. While I cannot speculate about hypothetical future scenarios that may come before the select board. What I can say is that as your town manager with general authority over town employees. I will treat all town employees fairly regardless of their relation to the select board members or any other municipal officer. My proposed action here would be proposed whether this issue came before us or not, because it's, the new code of ethics was, was just enacted and we would have to do this. The new statewide municipal ethics code provides a framework including complaint procedures and education and training. To avoid conflicts of interest and to ensure confidence in the decisions of town officers. And the town will need to take a number of steps to comply with the law. The act requires amongst, amongst other things, posting the new code on the town website, posting a complaint form on the town website. And mandated ethics training for all members of all boards, committees and commissions. Thus, regardless of the complaints addressed by this report. The select board in concert with town administration will need to take actions to implement the new law, including appointing a town employee or a member of the select board. To serve as an ethics liaison to the state ethics commission, assigning a municipal officer or body to receive complaints. Alleging violations to the municipal code of ethics and to have the ordinance committee draft a code of ethics investigation and enforcement ordinance. So what, what I put here for implementation. Is both the Vermont League of Cities and Towns and our neighboring towns have resources available for us to use. To implement the requirements of Act one seventy-one and this will be one of the priority items for the select board in the spring. Any questions on the conflict of interests before we move on? Moving on. The last claim that I was asked to review is whether there was or is, excuse me, whether there is, whether there was or is a lack of proper accounting. For veterans memorial committee use of town funds. And whether there is a need for an official audit. So to investigate this claim, there has been, to, to invest, investigate this claim, I requested that the treasurer basically do a detailed review. Of the veterans memorial committee's finances from the establishment of the reserve account on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and five through the present day. And basically, and, and the reason for this, I noticed you giggled a little bit is because we have to, before we. We release information to the public, we have to confirm that it's accurate information. So that's what, that, that's what we did to, to be able to do this here today. In two thousand and five, the voters of the town of Weathersfield passed the following article. Shall the voters of the town of Weathersfield establish a veterans memorial reserve fund pursuant to Title twenty-four. Section twenty-eight oh four of the Vermont statutes annotated to be used for the purpose of obtaining artist concepts. And construction estimates for possible veterans memorials, proposal writing, advertising, printing and publishing. And associated tasks to develop ideas, obtain funding and to keep Weathersfield residents informed. And allow the select board to expend monies from the fund for that purpose. So there's a key part at the end of this that allows the select board to expend monies for the, from the fund for that purpose. On the same ballot, the voters of the town of Weathersfield passed the following article. Shall the voters of the town of Weathersfield appropriate the sum of two thousand dollars to be deposited in the veterans memorial committee reserve fund? For, for reasons that are currently unknown. An agency fund was developed instead of a reserve fund. To hold all of the funds raised by and spent by the veterans memorial committee. Rather than a reserve account established that was established by the voters in two thousand and five. Neither the treasurer nor I. Are, are aware of why this happened. Back in two thousand and five, our treasurer, which is the same treasurer we have today. He was just working on a, a much more limited basis, so he was only working three hours a week. And during those three hours, he managed cash flow, he was in charge and control of working with the bank to take out loans. And his three hours was pretty consumed. So he doesn't really remember, or maybe he wasn't involved in the, the establishment of that agency fund instead of the reserve fund. I did review the select board meeting minutes from two thousand and five and two thousand and six. Really looking because the agency fund was created in two thousand and five. So we're looking to determine if the select board discussed it and voted on it to establish the agency fund. Instead of the reserve fund, but we did not find any record of that in the select board meeting minutes from that time. And even if there was. Because the voters were very specific about the articles, neither the town manager nor the select board would have the authority to be able to do that. So the treasurer did note that although the veterans memorial fund was treated as an agency fund account. The year-end balance never fell below the two thousand dollars. That was appropriated for the reserve fund. Records are reviewed also show that the town had around fourteen agency funds, so this wasn't the only agency fund that was set up. And, and this happened for a number of. And, and this happened for a number of years. All the way from two thousand and five until fiscal year nineteen. And in fiscal year nineteen. The auditors. Looked into this and. And the auditors uh, raised concerns. With the town's use of agency funds. And directed that those monies either be transferred to the ownership of any non-town organization. To which the money belonged or be transferred to other town funds. This was done and all fourteen agency funds were closed. The records I was able to review showed that from FY six through FY eighteen. A total of eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and three cents was expended from the Veterans Memorial Committee Agency Fund. And between FY nineteen through FY twenty-three. Nine hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-two cents was expended. The treasurer realized the money that was being spent from their Veterans Memorial Committee Reserve Fund. Did not align with the reserve fund's purpose. So he asked the committee to draw up new language and ask the voters of Weathersfield to amend the reserve fund's purpose. So the agency fund.
I'm also going to ask, uh, we can get the questions afterwards, uh, but please do not interrupt.
It's, it's okay.
You'll answer the question, but, but let's wait.
I'm going to answer the question now, and it's, it's a really good question. And I may have misspoke. So the reserve fund was established. And it was, it was set up as a reserve fund, but the two thousand dollars that the town appropriated to go into the reserve fund. Was instead put into an agency fund. And. Then in FY nineteen, the auditors raised concerns about the agency fund. They closed all of the agency funds. And then all of the money that was in the Veterans Memorial Committee Agency Fund was transferred to the reserve fund. And when it was transferred to the reserve fund. It was then restricted to the language that created the reserve fund in two thousand and five. So. On March fourth, two thousand twenty-three, voters of the town amended the purpose of the Veterans Memorial Fund with the following article. Shall the voters of the town of Weathersfield amend the purpose of the Veterans Memorial Reserve Fund to include? Use for the maintenance and repair. Of the Veterans Memorial Park and for the costs of events held to honor veterans. Between FY twenty-five, four and FY twenty-five. A total of one thousand, one hundred and eighteen twenty-seven was expended from the amended Veterans Memorial Reserve Fund. And a total of ten transactions none greater than two hundred and fifty dollars. At this time, I am not aware of information indicating money was in a, uh, excuse me. Was mis, uh, misappropriated, so I am not aware of any information. Where money was misappropriated. From the Veterans Memorial Committee. But it does appear that the approval process required for expenditures from reserve funds. Has not been followed. Twenty-four VSA twenty-eight oh four. governs the use of municipal reserve funds. According to twenty-four VSA twenty-eight oh four A. At an annual or special meeting duly warned. A municipality may establish a reserve fund to be under the control and direction of the legislative branch of the municipality. The reserve fund shall be kept in a separate account and invested. As are other public funds and may be expended for such purpose for which it was originally established. Or when authorized by a majority. Of the voters present and voting at an annual or special meeting duly warned for that purpose. The select board requires that expenditures from a reserve fund be approved by the select board in advance. Based on the records I reviewed, it does not appear that this process has been followed. I have heard from some that believe a formal audit. Of the Veterans Memorial, Memorial Account should be conducted. Such an audit would require significant time and financial resources of the town. And it is ultimately the select board's decision about whether the amount at issue and cost warrants a formal audit. Or some alternative course of action. My proposal. Looking forward is as follows. I think we can solve this by creating a reserve fund policy. To establish clear guidelines for managing Weathersfield's reserve funds. The policy should specify that reserve funds are to be used solely for their intended purpose. Outlining the procedures for their expenditure. And designate the individuals authorized to approve the use of these funds. Because I think what happened in this case and, and. And I've worked with the select board for over five years. On projects that required a combination of reserve funds and other funds or grant funds and reserve. We've structured things different, different ways. Um, to be able to make the reserve funds work for the town. Most effectively and most efficiently. And usually those are higher dollar amounts, usually those are. You know, twenty, fifty, a hundred thousand dollar transactions. Um, in this reserve account, most transactions are below a thousand dollars. Many of which are below two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, so I think. Creating a policy and putting an approval process in place would be most effective in this case. For all reserve funds. This action will also educate all parties on the purpose, on the proper use of reserve funds. Um, and establish clear guidelines to ensure consistent adherence to policy. The finance department and I would draft a reserve fund policy for review by the select board at a warned public meeting. The policy would undergo three readings at three separate warned public select board meetings before being adopted by the legislative body. Following adoption, the administration would then distribute the policy. To all appointed and elected officials involved in the use of reserve funds. Ensure that it is formally acknowledged, so everyone's aware of the policy. The goal is to, the overall goal of this is to ensure reserve funds are expended. According to the rules and regulations adopted by the select board, um, and then also per Vermont statutes. So that's the end of. That's the end of addressing those first three. Of my town manager update, I'm going to move on to. Town meeting. The town meeting is scheduled for this Saturday, March first at twelve thirty PM. Everyone should have received their annual town reports by now. Has anybody not received one? You haven't, okay, we do have them available upstairs, I can grab you one. Um, and we'll also have them available at the town meeting. We, we will be prepared on Saturday to discuss the general fund, highway fund. And solid waste fund budgets, um, as well as. The article that pertains to firefighter stipends. The fire departments in the town signed a memorandum of understanding. Has anybody not seen that memorandum of, of understanding? Okay, you haven't, you haven't, anybody else? All right, I, I've got some right here.
I, I got a copy tonight, but that's the first time I've seen it.
Jim Cahill, were you raising your hand that you needed one? Brandon, Jim Cahill needs one over here.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
I have a suggestion, and I, I don't know. I don't want to interfere here, but are all the questions been closed before we move on to the town presentation with regard to whatever's going on with the veterans committee?
I don't think there's any discussion on the veterans committee. Stuff, there was a, a request for an investigation and a report on the questions.
No, no, I meant when he just gave his presentation.
I understand that, and that, that, that pretty much closes the issue, doesn't it?
Well, I had a question, I mean, I, because I reviewed the minutes with Brandon, just, just when I walked in to pay my taxes and I, and. Part of the. Uh, when he referred to uh, the time period between like two thousand and six and two thousand and nineteen, did you go that, you went that far with the, with these agents and funds? I think the board needs to. If we have questions on that, I think that's kind of important, not. Specifically to the veterans, I'm talking about the agency fund to the reserve funds. Cause I always thought we had a policy in place dealing with reserve funds now, I'm not really aware that. What he just said, we need to develop a policy about reserve funds.
I, I agree with all of that, Dave. Um, and, and I think all of that's going to come up as we go through. Training, which is probably going to be necessary prior to making decisions on those policies. And, and then, and, and further, probably further scrutiny into. The records to identify any other. Areas we need to look at, and then get those things in line.
But I did see a, a piece in his minutes, and I can't remember the date, because you and I were standing looking at it where. There were, there were uh, a two thousand dollar warrant article, which is similar to what we get here in front of us coming out of a reserve fund. And that's the only way that that transaction would take to the board. The board is the only, not the treasurer, the board is the only body that can put money into a reserve account. And then take it out on request by the administration.
That is correct.
So I did see the transfer. My only other comment will be, I'm not sure how much I served at that time, probably in and out. But I know there was a town manager here at the time. And I know that when he said that Steve Hire was here for only three hours a week, that's very, that, that's, I don't even know if he did the work. You couldn't possibly do that work in three hours, what, what you said. We did have a finance person though. So we had a town manager at that time, and that's why I, I was scratching my head a little bit when you said, when you said almost thirteen year period. Where? There was a lot of problem here and it got, it got, took some time to sort out between all of the reserve funds. Got mixed up with the big bank accounts, like the taxes when we pay. That's not normal, okay?
It is not normal.
Right, so that got sorted out and it played its way through. That's what I'm thinking about this, all of a sudden I'm hearing for the first time the agency fund. And within the last week or two, and the reserve accounts. So I, I'm hoping that maybe that answers any questions that might come up about what's going on here with, with. The town or whatever, thinking about what, what's up with this, so. It's right now, though, that we don't appear to have any more agency accounts, which is really, I don't know what that means.
So.
Drop reserve accounts.
An agency fund is, is a lot different than a reserve fund. It allows money to come in and go out on behalf of an agency. Um, bypassing, I believe, our internal controls.
So it's like a checkbook for the committee?
Correct.
So, and not to blame anybody, any one of them, if they have money there, then they can spend it without the authority coming out of a reserve fund.
The historical society had one, the library had one. Trying to think of other agency funds, um, the eighteen seventy-nine schoolhouse had one. And really, I don't think any of it was like. Was intended to be like bad from our first review. But again, in order to really understand where the funds. How the funds came in and, and went out, it would require a formal audit. Because it, it, it's very, very time consuming, just this alone took. You know, probably sixty hours of time.
We, we have an annual audit every year. Are, are we able to make a special request within that audit to look at that?
Yes.
But, but I have one, but I have a question right off the get-go, what is the balance that's in, for instance, the vet? We're talking about the veterans committee, what is the balance in the veterans committee now?
I don't know off the top of your head. I don't know off the top of my head, it's, it's under, what is it? Yeah, roughly five thousand.
Then, then, then if you're looking for some special thing, then it's not enough money for me at this moment, because it seems like it's working its way out for an audit of that. I'm talking about if somebody says it's going to cost sixty hours or whatever the hours of time, then for me. It's, it's not enough. Not, I don't, I'm not.
Oh, no, it's, I'm not saying it's going to take sixty hours of time to do that. It took around sixty hours of time to do what we've done to date. Uh, when I was talking to the treasurer, we think it would be. Very, very, very time consuming, um, to go back into, because what basically has to happen is we'd have to go. Each year, we have a whole vault of records. So you have to pull out the paper records, find the Veterans Memorial Committee transactions. And then review them against the policy and the law at that time to determine whether. They were expended per the policy in two thousand and five, because the policy in two thousand and five. And the Vermont statutes could be different than what they are today. So for each one of those transactions, it would be very time consuming.
I, I would just like to remind everybody, and I know that you know this, Brandon, the town manager has the authority to spend on a purchasing policy. Policy, and I believe also that Ray at the highway. Uh, under ten thousand dollars by themselves. The, the committees would have to work through a, a similar purchasing policy type of a thing where they take a vote and, and to be. There'd be enough check and balance through that committee where. One would think that the dollar amounts do not meet. Significant threshold. There needs to be some level of trust here.
The, the way it works with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and it works very well, and actually the Conservation Commission as well. Um, is they, they vote as a committee or a commission. Um, commission for the conservation and then a committee for Parks and Rec. Oh, it is Parks and Recreation, so both commissions. Put on their, their agenda and expense, and then they vote to recommend the expense to me. And then I review the expense, review it against the policy. Make sure that it's efficient use of town funds and then either approve it or not approve it. Um, and I think that should be a consistent. Policy for all boards and committees. We started that several years ago, and then we got caught up in a lot of different other things like ARPA funds, FEMA projects. Things that took priority over creating those policies for the remaining committees.
Right. Mr.
Mike, I know you said that.
Can you go to the microphone?
Having reviewed the last meeting, you can't hear a word anybody says over there, having watched it several times.
I'm, I'm asking the board, I know we've already slid past the veterans committee, I'd like the opportunity just to make a, a brief statement. If the, with the board's permission.
Uh, uh, about what?
I felt that we kind of slipped past. The veterans committee discussion. Without, that's what most of the people are here for, without an opportunity for other people, maybe to make a brief statement, and I'm asking to make a brief statement.
It, it's, it's not on the agenda for discussion, John, it's on as part of a report. The, the, Patty.
I'm asking the five of you.
Okay, and I'll put it to that, but I'm going to make my statement before I get there. Patty, who asked the question. And, and it wa, at, at the last meeting. Um, what the specific. Um, complaints were, and that question. No, you did. And it wasn't answered, is what, all I'm trying to get to. That's all I'm trying to get to, uh, it, it wasn't answered, and. From the last meeting, we ended up with. A decision to do an investigation. That was asked of the town manager and for the town manager to give his report. I think the discussion of the topic is over, that's my opinion. I don't think there's any need for us to continue to discuss this matter. That's my opinion. My opinion. And, uh, you, you know. I, I take responsibility for that meeting. Going as far south as it went. It's my job to run the meeting, which is what I'm going to do tonight, and I'm not going to allow it to descend into that. And I'm, I'm concerned that that could happen, and I'm not sure that it needs to, being that the questions have been. Investigated and the answer has been provided regarding those. Uh, so I'm not sure how far we need to delve into this moving. Past the, the, the investigation and the investigative, gations report. Board members, where are you at on this?
My belief is any other topic, we would allow a public comment. And I do think it has to be civil, and I think it has to be on point. And I do have the same worry, right, uh, because I do not want to repeat of how people, uh, have that. Conversation last time, but I do think any other subject that we've talked about, that we've allowed public.
We had public comment on the agenda.
Um, I would, I would agree with Nate, that I think it's. I think we just need to clear the air, it may not be the, the sort of following Robert's rules or whatever, but. I think it was, well, I don't, you know. I agree with Nate too, I just think we just need to. People say what they want to say.
Well, if there's a way to, if you want to go to the end of the meeting, there's, there's other business to take up, if you wanted to go down that road, I don't think that's. Good, I mean, that's kind of why I broke into Brandon, I asked you about it, about. After he presented that, more of a technical thing for me about. I recall seeing a transfer of warrants, I know in the past a town manager mixed up. All the, this money, it was really difficult to. I recall seeing a transfer of warrants. I know in the past, a town manager mixed up all the, this money. It was really difficult to separate. So, but all the, I, I'd hate to hold all these people, including the ones online, to, to the end of the meeting. That would be silly. So I, so.
My, my suggestion, Mike, if it's okay, is I would say, make your comment, be done, set it, you know, you can set a time limit. And make sure it's respectful. You're being cut off. Those are all, those are all, I think, very appropriate ground rules. Uh, versus having back and forth dialogue, which is not the intention, right? It's allow people to make their public comment.
I, I also I also, uh, do not want to turn this legislative board, uh, meeting into a campaign.
I agree. I agree.
I will say, I have, I've already said that, you know, the, the, the last meeting, it's on me, I'm the chair. And, um, but I will say we are very fortunate to have very competent, dedicated candidates for Mr. Polerstein. And we all should feel lucky to have two people that are as qualified and dedicated to the town.
This will not be a campaign speech.
You, you may, you may have the floor.
Thank you. I'm going to stand over here so I don't have my back to too many people. We're a small town. We rely on our volunteers to fill many roles. They don't get paid a penny. They spend a lot of time and a lot of effort. I think every one of our volunteers does the best they can with the information that's available. Will mistakes be made? Yes, they will. They get made by the paid employees, they get made by the volunteers. I think we all do the absolute best that we can. I'm hoping that we avoid accusations on each other. The board members are available, the town office is usually available. Talk it over with people. Don't take it public and do everything online and create more animosity. Let's make this back into the small town that we all remember.
John, John, I want to say thank you very much for that comment. I, I wish I could have found those words. That's exactly how I feel. Thank you very much, Chris Gerson. Anybody else? Oh, just set it down. That'd be easier for somebody. Any other comments, DeForest? There, there were the, the handout over here. So it's easier to find.
I would, I would certainly have directed my questions under comments from citizens, non topics, not on the agenda, had I known what was in this report. I had no knowledge of what was in it, and I feel like I've been dissected under a microscope and it's very uncomfortable. I do have a couple of points that I, I feel really need to be made as far as a conflict of interest policy is concerned. Minutes posting, I'll take that on the chin. I assume someone else was doing it. That's my fault. You know what happens when you assume? It does make an ass out of me for sure. But posting minutes, I can't do that. I don't have access to the website, so I can't take credit for that. Um, conflict of interest, I don't know any town manager who has commented on the ethical, the ethical, what's the word? It's completely escaping me, suitability of a select board candidate. If I had known, I knew as soon as I had been asked to run for select board, I have a husband and a daughter that work for the town. I went to the state, Vermont State Ethics Commission and laid it right out there. Is this a problem? If I'd known it was a problem or they said it was a problem, I wouldn't be standing here now. So I did get sign off from them. Um, and in the past, Peter Cole served as a select board member. His wife Shirley was a, an employee of the town office. And Wendy Smith was recently a select board member and Olivia is her daughter and sat right next to my opponent, Mr. Murray. And lastly, expending reserve funds, requiring prior approval of the select board. I assumed, again, that signature on the warrant that you all sign is the approval. If that isn't correct, how is it that five years under my chairmanship as a veterans memorial committee, sending expenditures to the board and going through the town manager, the board and the treasurer, not one of you said, whoa, DeForest, you're doing this wrong. If you have a policy and I wasn't following it, why didn't you tell me? I would gladly have followed it, but no one ever did. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Emmett McGowan, um, is it possible to like get at some point later, when this is all wrapped up, how much this fiscally is costing us? This whole investigation thing? You mentioned 60 hours. Is that of your time?
Uh, that's a combination of
Okay, it could be totted up, maybe. The dollar amount of what this is costing the town. Yeah? So we as the taxpayers, fiscally conservative people can get a handle on what this has cost us, everybody. So maybe the next time before somebody has thoughts of an accusation, they can think, hmm, how much is this going to cost the town? And maybe think about it, getting to your point about talking to each other instead of making accusations in the public, uh, forum without thinking of the consequence of what it's going to cost the town. Fiscally conservatives or whoever you might be. Is that possible? Can we think about getting a dollar amount on this or is that impossible? Brandon, 60 hours so far.
Roughly 2,500 to $3,000.
$3,000 so far and maybe a few extras.
Maybe a little bit more with the town attorney review, maybe approaching $5,000.
Okay. Well, good work, guys. Whoever's responsible for that.
Questions? Yes, sir. Please state your name.
Randy Brown.
Oh, you gotta, no, you gotta, you gotta get to the mic.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
Randy Brown. Uh, my main concern was that the select board allowed unsubstantiated allegations into a public meeting. Um, I think Nate toward the end kind of started to see that concern. It was pretty apparent that you all had just been given that information. And I just, I hope going forward that those kinds of things don't happen again, because we see what happens. This, this meeting went downhill very quickly. But I appreciate the work you guys do, uh, ladies and gentlemen. Um, but please, in the future, remember that.
Anybody else?
So first of all, I, I do
Dr. Murray.
Thank you. I, I do echo, um, my colleague, John Harrison's remarks. Uh, we are a small town. Uh, we're, we're a neighborhood. Um, I've got a kid in eighth grade. Um, I'm taking heat on Facebook, uh, from someone that's married to a teacher. Uh, so we are a small town. Um, I, I'm, I'm going to be short. I, I believe, uh, the committee should be expanded. Um, I'd like to ask the three that resigned to come back. I'd like to ask to work together with them. Uh, the concerns I raised in a private email response following the select board meeting a month ago. Um, I did not make those public. I know what a formal complaint is. I know what a formal complaint triggers. I was an inspector general. I looked at fraud, waste and abuse. I chose not to go that route. I addressed DeForest, the town manager, and, uh, and I think there was two town employees on that email that I replied to. At the last select board meeting, that was the response from my opponent that was dropped on your desks. That was what blew this up and made it public. And then that was posted all over Facebook. And then I, then a lot of character assassination began. Uh, and my belief is that those concerns, you've seen that they've been validated. Those are valid concerns. Um, yeah, it took time. But it's not just one committee. If you have one committee spending from the reserves without your approval and the town manager's approval, that's wrong. It cannot happen. It's the taxpayers' money. And you cannot misuse the taxpayers' money and you cannot bypass boards. The numbers of the veterans memorial committee is this where this all started. I stood here a month ago and I said, I'd like to volunteer. There was two vacancies. We found out that over a period of time, there's been seven, eight, up to 11 members of that committee. I offered my apologies to the board and everyone here for wasting people's time, not realizing that I was not able to volunteer. And those two vacancies weren't legitimate. I want to tell the people of Weathersfield, volunteer. Be part of your town. This is a nonpartisan forum and some instigators are trying to make things partisan. I spent 33 wears years, I have a record of 33 years of federal service as a nonpartisan. Let's keep it nonpartisan. Remember, we have children, wives, businesses in this community. And I would like to extend an olive branch to DeForest and others. Yeah, there were 15 open meeting law violations. Yeah, money was being spent in an unauthorized manner, but you know what? It can all be rectified and we have a solution to rectify it. So let's, no one's going to jail here. Let's fix it. Let's make sure our committees know the ethics, know the policies, but the whole town should operate that way. And it's time to move forward. Let's focus on the issues. I wish my opponent good luck in the race and I look forward to, uh, seeing everybody on election day. Thank you.
Okay. Well, before you do that.
I just want you to know, I have two signed warrants here with your name on them that sign veterans memorial expenses. That's all I wanted to say.
All right. Are, are there, are there any other comments? I'd like to move on with the town managers. We could. Dave?
Me.
Yeah.
I still have a topic to cover.
Yeah.
As well.
So I didn't make the meeting on the 10th. Was there a, uh, and it apparently after the 10th, there were a couple of resignations from the veterans committee. Is that true?
Yes.
Does the board act on those or not?
The board has to accept them, uh, or, or not. If we don't act on them, they just kind of fade away on election day. Right. Let me go to DeForest as, DeForest, as the chair of the veterans committee, what, there aren't any terms on that. So those are annual appointments, correct? So, so, you know, after, after, after Saturday, they're going to be reappointed anyway. Reappointments anyway.
So
After Tuesday. Well, after Tuesday, yes. Yeah, thank you, John.
So I don't think it's specific to a committee, but when they, but when they, but when somebody on a committee resigns, normally the board's, uh, buddy that I've been up here, generally you accept them or whatever, and that provides an opportunity for an opening or something. And depending on the circumstances, if somebody moves out of town, you say, we, we accept this with regret or something like that. There's some kind of a path forward. Uh, and I know in the very beginning that Nate said something about what his, so we, we've just heard from a few speakers that, that they've expanded on whatever they want to talk about. Here's what I think about the whole deal, because I wasn't here. Very upset that people resigned over this. And I will not accept their resignation because that's where I was going. Um, because I've been, I don't know about rules. I don't know about anything. I'm just a farmer. And I didn't serve in the country, but my brother, who didn't serve either, is now president of the Legion in Arizona, and he leads a group of motorcycles from Los Angeles to Arlington for three years in a row. And they pick up hundreds of motorcycles. I've been to our veterans ceremony in the Perkinsville Green. I've seen like, and I messaged Chip Cobb today. I've seen veterans, I saw Roger Eastman be helped out of his car with his original uniform on, tattered. I don't know, I don't know about anybody else in this room. I don't care about rules. I care about what we did and how it's being treated in that manner. And so I, I'm not going to accept the resignations of, of the person. So if it, I want, it kind of didn't bother me to allow August to join because of his service. Um, but I know the work that everybody else has done to pave the way. So I guess that's where I'm at. I would like everybody to join back because you could submit your, I'm asking you on my way out, I'm asking you to reconsider and to put your name in for that committee, along with others for the first meeting, or I, I think you take it up on the second meeting of order of business after March. Thank you.
Any other comments? Board members? Back to you, Randy.
I, I agree with you, Dave. On the veterans memorial committee members, I think they, they shouldn't resign either and they should stay on the committee. I do just want to address really quick, DeForest, you had said you've never heard any town manager address conflicts of interest of select board members. This was the tat, I was tasked with this job, um, by the select board.
Did you catch where he did that?
Well, he answered the complaint, which was to look at, uh, the law, right? And to ensure, uh, and make the statement, there was not one. And if there is fault, it is with the select board who asked him to investigate and ensure that there was not. Um, uh, uh, which was under the belief that there was not, um, and interpret the law. Um, I think the way he started, right, was it is incumbent on the voters to make that decision. This is, this is the way the, uh, code of ethics is written. And I think that was, the intention was to just share the code of ethics. Uh, but it is incumbent on the voter, voters to make that decision.
I, I, I just wanted to clear the air there to make sure that you understood that that was the assignment that I was tasked with. So.
Now, we're moving, we're moving, we're Steve, yeah, please step up and identify yourself.
Wasn't it, wasn't intended to say anything, but my name is Bob Stevens. I've been in town here on the zoning board and school board for, and, and here for 45 years. And, um, was very upset with, with the meeting that we were at, where all of this arose. And, um, I am still, I'm, I'm still feeling very upset because, um, un- unfortunately, charges were made in a political campaign that turned out to be, in my mind, slightly accidental or frivolous by a candidate here. And, 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 and friends all over town say, Bob, what the hell did she do? Is she, was she, was she really an embezzler? Is she really embezzled? Over this town right now is, is a horrible amount of concern that somebody amongst us, I was on the zoning board with her for several years. Um, known as only a totally honorable person. Well, I was always grateful to have her and you guys all, all here. But a candidate came in here and, and, and pretty much tried to destroy this person for the benefit of a candidacy. And right now I still am not sure, because if, if I left here, somebody would still say, all right, well, they, well, they found this stuff. And so she really did do, she, she was really involved with a little of these problems that were errors. And now they were judged to be errors, I assume. Um, should, should she really be allowed to, you know, be on this, on a select board? So what I would, what I would be saying is this. What's the judgment? What's, is there a judgment on this woman right here? Innocent, guilty, somewhere in between? How, 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 how are we, how are we to determine what it is that this person is? A virtuous, wonderful candidate, I mean candidate, yes, but, um, servant of this town for years and years and years? That, 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 that somebody for the benefit of an advantage, they thought on somebody finding a picky own kind of thing to do is, is possibly destroying her to many, many people in this town. Gee, we thought DeForest was pretty sharp. Did, did, did she really do something bad? I would like to see a verdict or, or an expression of, of a full explanation to the town of, of what everybody did. Um, in response to a, a few genuine little issues that were there. But the initial thing was an accusatory thing involving a term, even a, a term like embezzlement. Absolute
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm getting ready to shut you off. So wrap it up.
I'm, I'm, I'm wrapped up. I would like to see an explanation for the town to be in the paper or, or, or whatever. I'm, I'm, I'm wrapped up. I would like to see an explanation for the town to be in the paper or, or, or whatever. Saying this woman is not a crook. That's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
I've got another handout. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joseph Buble. What I'd like to say is, what I've seen here over the past meetings is, first of all, was avoidable by this board. They could have simply expanded the committee, which there had been a precedent for over many other committees. It was just expanded, five-minute discussion. You guys put somebody, a decorated veteran on trial. And that's like, come on, you put someone on trial to become a volunteer. Shame on you. That's what I have to say about that. Also, is it not the responsibility of a citizen when they find a concern on something to ask a question? What we need are people to ask hard questions. Thank you.
Julia? Julia Levy?
I remembered.
You're good, Mike. I, I'd like to see the blaming stop, but I'd also like to see the board who are in charge of Brandon and his work somehow work out a policy as to what happens when hard questions are asked that are very personal. How to keep them private? How to bring them to perhaps a private meeting of the select board if necessary? How to arrange face-to-face meetings of the two people, the one accusing the other for discussion? I'd like to see some policy written around that so that Brandon doesn't have to make it up. So that it's the board's word on how it works in our town, please.
I, I'm, I'm going to throw out an answer here on Bob Stevens and Julia's comments, and I'm not sure Jones are in this or not. Um, Dr. August Murray did address this already, uh, when he stood up. When he filed those questions, he filed with me, the town manager, and the town clerks. At that point, that's not a public record. It, there's no need for it to be in the public eye. And, and the questions asked by Dr. Murray were, as Mr. Buble, I guess, did, did say, um, they're questions that need to be answered, and they need to be looked into. And that began with the town manager taking that responsibility and doing that. And as some of that started to come to light, DeForest Beers chose to write a response to those questions. And instead of just sending the response to the four people in the original email, me, the town manager, and the two town clerks, she was copied on the original email. She could, would have then returned the copy to Dr. Murray and had the response. And my view, my personal view of this is, at that point, we, the town manager, myself, the two parties, uh, town council, uh, would have moved forward with this internally and not in the public's eye. And that is exactly how I wish that had played out. Unfortunately, when DeForest issued her response, she sent the response to this board in its entirety. I, I still have a question I'm waiting for an answer on, which is as a subordinate board member, when you, when you send an email. Mike.
I think we're getting off topic.
I don't think it's off topic. I think it directly responds to, to part of what, what Bob Stevens is saying and what Julia Levy was asking about, about how, about policy. Some of this is in law. That's part of the open meeting law. Um, and that is that, um, you know, we've been through these before. We've been through some investigations before on open meeting laws. And, um, you have to identify what behavior or was it that, that it was found to be in violation of that law? And then you have to rectify it, bring it into the public's eye, and you have to go through a, a, a training session about, you know, with everybody to prevent it from happening again. I'm not real big on pointing fingers and placing blame anywhere here on anybody. If, if this thing could have been handled better, it was on me. So you want to take it out on me, here I am. Okay. I just got done saying a few minutes ago, I, I don't think the doctor did anything wrong. I don't think DeForest did anything wrong. I think they're both exceptional candidates for Mr. Fuller's seat. And everybody in this town should be fortunate that we have these two people running for this seat. They're both competent. They're both dedicated. They both hold the, the, this town closest to their hearts. And that's how they're going to fill Mr. Fuller's seat, in my opinion. I don't think there's any, in my opinion, and I think I can say this in representation of the board. We had a special meeting to review this. We don't feel that there was wrongdoing at all in regards to the complaint that was submitted from, from DeForest Beers or in, in retrospect. Could, could, could I point to one and say, yeah, you might have done this wrong. You might have done this wrong. Don't care. We gotta, we gotta, we've got to grow from this. We've got to get better than this. We've got to move forward. And we've got to take the actions to correct it, as everybody keeps suggesting, and not have it happen again. And that, and that's all.
Please say that to the town.
I, I, I believe.
And that would be good because there's a whole town out there with, with awful thoughts right now.
I, I, I know, and, 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 and I'm sick to my stomach over it because, as I said, I bear, I bear the responsibility for that and how that meeting was allowed to continue. So I, you know, it's tough sometimes up here.
Well, getting back to the point, is there a birthday?
You, you're not recognized. The gentleman next to you is.
Please, please to the microphone and stand near.
This is the first time I've ever been to a town meeting. But I do have a question. Uh, you know, I'm caught, kind of caught off guard on everything that's going on here. But my question is, is this gentleman here said the stuff went all over town? And you're saying that the question was brought to you? How, how did it get out to the town? Who was the person that did that?
I thought I just clarified that.
Okay.
That happened when a, when, when DeForest responded in an email to this entire board.
Okay.
And in, 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 in that response, she contained her opinion, her thoughts, and her answers to the complaint. And it was, and when we got here for this meeting, it was on her table, and that made it a public record. And it opened it up into this, into this discussion.
Yeah.
It, it, that would not have happened had it only been responded to me, the town manager, and the two town clerks. It was when, when it involved this board with her opinion that it, it may have, and that's the question I'm still waiting for an answer on. It may have crossed also that open meeting law violation, but.
Okay, so.
We'll handle all of those violations. They're not, they're, they're not, they're petty, in my opinion. They're petty. We just can't be doing.
So it wasn't Dr. Murray then that, that caused it to get out everywhere. He just brought it to you. And then when the lady responded, it went public. Is that what happened?
At this, at, at the, at the February tenth meeting. That is.
Okay. Because just from what I've heard, you know, I feel Dr. Murray brought up a legitimate question. I feel that all of you, uh, handled it, tried to handle it within, and, um, and, and that's commendable.
I, 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 I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut in there, and I'm going to say, in the same respect, DeForest Beers didn't do anything wrong.
Yeah, okay. I'm not saying she did, but I'm, I'm saying that, um, you know, the information got out. I don't think it's out in public as much as you're saying it is. You know, I, I think it's more in here than it is out in public, but. But what I'm saying is this, um, and, and what I'm saying is this, is I'm not here to campaign either. But I tell you one thing. Um, first off, I'm a, I'm a vet. I'm a Vietnam vet, Vietnam in sixty-eight. And so, um, and I really support Dr. Murray. I think he's an excellent candidate.
We're not having a campaign. I'm, I'm sorry, we're not, I don't know who yelled, but I'm, I'm going to stop you from that, too.
Okay.
We're not having a campaign. That's enough.
Okay, I'm not, like I said, I'm not campaigning, but, but.
You just, you just did.
Okay, okay. I apologize then, but what I'm saying is, is.
Mike.
He, it, it didn't get out because of him. It was contained in here.
Okay.
Okay, I will cut it off.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Wait a minute, I, I recognize David Grant, go Branson. He's in the room.
Thank you for hearing. Um, I think over the, I think over the past fifty minutes, what's happening is exactly what you said.
I didn't want to have happen.
I would really like to see an end to this and continue on.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, no, no, I, I, I think I'm going to take that advice, and, and that's it. We're, we're done. We, I did have a point of order. What is your point of order?
It was odd.
That was me. We were getting a little off track.
Oh, oh, oh.
And the audience decided to speak over it. That was my point of order.
Okay, and, 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 uh, Mr. Buble is the chair of the planning commission and understands Robert's rules of order, and he is correct. We don't speak over one another. One person has the floor and speaks, and I control that. So let's be respectful. That's what we talked about in the beginning. Anybody here want to say anything? Thank you. Brandon, continue with your report, please.
Um, I'm sorry. I did have a flow going, and now I'm like, um, the last thing was the fire department's memorandum of understanding that I distributed probably twenty minutes ago. And, um, I did just kind of want to briefly go through this. This memorandum of understanding has been executed by the town, um, through its, through myself, um, and also both fire departments. So we have an agreement with all three of us in this memorandum of, of understanding um, to transition to the Weathersfield Fire Department. Um, and it, and this outlines the steps that we're going to be taking to make an effort to do that. Um, there is an article on at town meeting this Saturday. Um, we'll be going into this in much more detail, um, but I did just want to point out that this memorandum of understanding is very important for the town. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, you want to jump in?
Okay, so it looks like, uh, we have the finance report. No, luckily I had on my glasses, so I can't see that. Put mics back.
So did, did.
My apologies.
Thank you. Oh, oh, Mike. So did you skip the town meeting presentation? Because you went.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, it would be.
He, Brandon skipped over it.
I don't know.
I, I did address it, and I, and what I said is that, um, we're going to be presenting on the general fund, highway fund, and solid waste fund budgets at town meeting.
So we don't have a, we don't have a, um, look see of what you're doing?
I apologize, Dave. My time's been totally sidetracked. Correct.
Awesome.
Um, in fact, I, I'll be creating the town meeting presentation tomorrow and through the, throughout the week. So that's where I'm at there. All right, um, so as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, general fund revenues stand at fifty-four percent of the budget, totaling nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. The town clerk's office is under budget in several areas, including computerization, ball fees, motor vehicle registrations, and land records. Additionally, land use permits are below budget, though these typically increase in the spring as building activities commence. Um, interest on current taxes is also under budget by ten percent. On the other hand, some revenue streams such as current use and interest earnings are exceeding expectations. General fund expenses are currently at forty-four percent of the budget. The Lister's office is notably under budget at fifteen percent, while the Escutney Fire Department is at twenty-seven percent of its budget. Projections for the general fund indicate five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars in additional revenue above the budget, while expenses are expected to exceed budget by fourteen thousand dollars, resulting in a net variance of eight, eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Um, so basically what we're doing now is we're going through all the department's budgets and either freezing certain line items or restricting certain line items to an amount of money so that we don't land in a deficit at year end. Um, as of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, revenues in the highway fund are at fifty-nine point four six percent of the budget. The highway department received more state aid than originally anticipated. Um, nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars more. Um, in addition to a reimbursement of twenty-nine sixty-five from a grant resulting in increased revenue. However, expenses currently stand at sixty-one point eight four percent, leading to a potential deficit of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars. This variance is primarily due to the debt service payments made in the first and second quarters. Additionally, the repairs and supplies line is at ninety-three percent, which is atypical for this time of year. Legal fees have also exceeded the budget by eight thousand, and that's primarily due to the old bore road issue, um, that we're currently dealing with. Uh, projections for year end indicate that revenues will reach a hundred and one percent of the budget, while expenses will be at ninety-nine point six five percent. Um, the solid waste fund, it's actually good news for once. Um, as of December thirty-first, revenues at the transfer station are at sixty-two percent of the budget, primarily due to the receipt of all fixed revenues in the first and second quarters. Bearable revenues are currently two percent under budget. Expenses are at fifty-three percent of the budget, resulting in a net positive position of thirty-two thousand dollars. Projections for year end indicate that revenues will reach a hundred and three percent of the budget. Expenses will be at ninety-nine percent. If these trends continue, the transfer station is expected to end the year with a positive balance of sixteen thousand, driven by the increase in the punch ticket and the payoff of the trash compactor. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Dave.
Fire department member.
Oh, you finished that while I was gone?
You might want to hear me. Running away. I wouldn't be running away. I'm going to shoot off.
I'm going to give, I'm going to give the room a few minutes to, uh, either.
Whatever.
Well, you guys are going out the door. I didn't want to miss any tricks from Dave.
Apparently I was out getting my soda. That's what I was, why I was asking.
Sorry, when you went out.
I apologize.
Well, they were leaving. Hey, I don't want them leaving. Not for the excitement. Go, go get them. They, they.
I had to go get some, I could hardly swallow. I had to go get my soda. I forgot it.
Um, I'm going to be calling the meeting back to order here. Um, some of you did stay, and Mr. Fuller had asked for, uh, an opportunity to make comments. Uh, Dave, you want to still do that?
Oh, good, yeah.
Okay.
You're kidding? This is my last show?
Where is yours, Mr. Fuller?
Okay, so I have a question of the, uh, first, um, on E, which Brandon just gave, this fire department memorandum of understanding. How, how is it that I'm seeing that for the first time tonight? And how is it that the chair signs this without the authority of the full board?
I only signed it as a witness. I didn't sign it, it, it says, it says witness. So I'll assign.
Okay, because I, because you're, you're underneath there, your, your name says.
I, I, that's my title, but I just, I, I only, I only signed it as a witness. I was present at the meeting.
Okay.
It's not an authorization by the board in any way, shape, or form.
Okay. So as I read through this, I'm, I'm, um, seeing, um, July first, twenty twenty-six or some, you know, I see some deadlines that are moving, uh, which is okay with me. You know, I mean, they're kind of, so the target isn't right away. But, but here's what I think about the whole thing. So the fire commission was disbanded on a town floor vote about a year after, um, the last uh, fire chief proposal came for a hundred thousand dollars, and I'm not really sure why, but it did. It was comprised of the two, I've served on it for three or four years. It served as, uh, two fire chiefs, um, um, a select board representative, um, an elected representative, so the voters had to say one, and then the board also appointed one. Um, that, like, like I said, was disbanded, and this summer, uh, through, uh, the town manager's reports to us, he had convened some, um, committee made up of fire personnel. I think one of his mistakes was not fully informing the board about the ongoing discussions. He would say to us in our town, in our meetings, uh, and then I think another mistake, and this is directed to the, uh, the members here, moving forward. I think a real mistake, uh, of this board, uh, during the year was to adopt a summer uh, policy where it helped, like for July and August, but that tripped into the rest of the year. Uh, for instance, in November and December, we still only had one board meeting. That, that, that wasn't good. From, and now I'm looking back in hindsight, and I, I would advise that you people stick to two meetings a month. We got, because number one, they're shorter. You, you're able to catch up on some things and follow through a little bit better. So the first budget proposal came to me on November sixth and the board. And it was Brandon's first, uh, of our run-through of the, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six budget. In that proposal, there wasn't, not, not one piece of firefighter stipends. Just the two chiefs got paid approximately two thousand dollars. Um, uh, and by the way, that is still incorporated in the general fund right now. There's, there's still there, so the special article goes, goes above that. Of the chair at that time didn't allow any questions. But, but what questions would, would there have been? Because the budget was presented on November sixth. On December ninth, our next meeting, we didn't have a meeting, another meeting in November. Um, on December ninth, uh, the board heard another budget presentation of which twenty thousand dollars or eighteen thousand dollars, something number like that arose uh, for firefighter stipends for the first time. And I know that, Mike, you said to me, oh, boy, Dave, you're setting this up. You didn't have a question. Or, you know, it's some, uh, uh, after the meeting was over about what my thoughts were about that. But I listened to Josh Campo come to the microphone and he, and he said that he wanted to navigate a way through, I don't know if Josh Duffin did as well, but that's fine. Cause that's why I let it slip in my mind to roll around, um, about uh, uh, some kind of small amount of money for the members so that it helped them get from wherever they at to, to the station. And I want, but I also had in my mind and from history about, it also triggered my memory about Brandon's packages, his pay packages, about giving the most benefit to the person at the least cost to the town, which means taxes and everything. So in my mind, I was thinking, we, we adopted a proposal, it's common knowledge, it's public knowledge that Brandon gets some, some of his, uh, salary is now incorporated in travel. It's printed, it's fine, same, similar to professional development. It, it, it gives him more and make, has the town pay less. That's where I was going with the December ninth thought process. I knew it would be continued for another meeting or two before we finish the budget. We didn't have another meeting in December. On January ninth was the first time that now the twenty thousand dollar or eighteen thousand dollar stipend blew up to eighty.
You mean December ninth?
January ninth.
Yep, January.
So that was the first notice of that amount of money raised to this board. We weren't asked about it. We weren't told about it. Didn't have any discussion about it in open meeting. Um, on January fourteenth, we had to, uh, bear in mind, we, there's a deadline to meet the warnings that the town clerk posts um, in any budget year, and I think it was about the twenty-eighth or so, that the, any final decision would have to be made. Um, so January fourteenth, this board met again, and it debated, uh, about the eighty thousand dollar stipend. I wanted to know about a lot of other questions in my mind that surfaced. What kind of model were we talking about? What, what was going on? The first one that we got shown, all of a sudden it was gonna be one chief, not two. I mean, Kelly held it up, held up that paper and said that. I was stopped from speaking. I sat quietly and folded my hands. I knew I was gonna have to take a different path. The board continued, the four members continued with their discussion, and they put the eighty thousand dollars on the warning. I wanted to say, and I'm gonna say tonight, that I do not support Article Seven. There's been some questions about why or how you're doing this. Because it raises your taxes three percent by itself. I've talked to human resources upstairs, talked to the treasurer. It's going to be more than eighty thousand dollars just by simply matching the, uh, social security funds. It's gonna drive up to eighty-six thousand. Plus, all of the members have to put in their social security numbers. They become employees of sorts. That's not the path I wanted to take, take, and I wanted the opportunity to talk about this before it met the warning. My solution, and I've run it by Brandon, I'm very clear. I attended the February fifth meeting down here. I showed up. It's the meeting where Brandon holds with the firefighters. I was surprised to learn, sat quietly for an hour. I was surprised to learn from two new members, but twelvers members from the Escutney Fire that half of their membership wants in and half does not. That's a red flag to me. I want everybody to be in. I do want one fire department. I do want them to be able to navigate their way through some of the fees like training and, and maybe some money to get them to the, these scenes, not to the level like this is. I have an answer. It's in the system. If this article goes down, so it's easy to throw darts. It's harder to come up with a solution. We have in place the policy which can be enacted by the town manager in place right now. I've spoken to dispatch. They're navigating, where the young guy I talked to up there is a member of his Hartford, uh, Fire Department. They're doing the same thing. Putney is as well. There's a way to navigate our way path back to the hazmat funding for these vehicles on some accidents. I don't believe the talk that we can't collect. I believe the town office should be doing all the paperwork and can be worked through emergency management. I believe that we are required to have insurances. Therefore, we simply, and, and, and I've talked to some members and Rod Spalding used to do this and say, people say it's hard to collect. I know how to collect. Add a percent and a half a month. You give them the copy of the policy, the fire chief or this person that's on scene on some of these, um, uh, simply picks up the data. The, um, between the dispatch, which can correlate the actual timing of the accidents, the, um, the billing can be done to the Upper Valley Mutual Aid Dollar structure that's in place right now. I remember that back when I sat on the, uh, fire commission. It's like three hundred dollars an hour. The day that our five hundred thousand dollar trucks come out of the barn needs to stop without money, has to stop. Um, I know this is a little bit, so if you look at the totality of whatever the calls are, there'll probably be five or ten of these. That's enough to matter. It's enough to deflect this property tax increase. That's what we have to do. Without, with the two articles that are gonna pass, it's going to raise, uh, taxes eight percent in total. Now, some alleg, some not an allegation, some points were made that her, personally said, I don't know why you're on, not on this day, but it's only eleven cents a day. I don't know why it matters. It's not eleven cents a day, folks. I pay um, twenty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents every single day of all the year for my taxes. It's not. The town tax of my bill is thirty-three percent. The school's a sixty-seven. My town tax is eight dollars and five cents a day. Eleven cents matters. Especially when there's a way to navigate not to have that. So that's what I think. And I'd be happy, even though I'm getting done, I know that the day after that meeting, the, on February fifth, that I know that the town manager was as confused as I was. I had a question there, but it's not reflected in the minutes, cause I looked it up in the fire department minutes. I had a question in that meeting. And that made, that question was with twenty-five percent, it seems, of the membership of the two departments, wondering whether they're gonna continue or whether they like this plan or don't like this plan. That, that's, that's not good enough to, for the nine-one-one callers for me. I want a hundred. I want a hundred percent. And just like the veterans committee, I don't want anybody from the fire departments to resign. I wanna navigate a way through this, and I suggested to Brandon that if this went down, and I don't wanna deflect this off into the future, saying it's not gonna happen and just like every, every other year. No, no, my solution was let's have a special town meeting. But my bigger solution is now, I don't know that we need town approval at all. I think that the town manager, if he worked through the system with the hazmat things, and if, if we have, I, I know he has the ability to undertake some money on his own through the purchasing policy without budgeting. And even if we did, we could get this off the ground with the rainy day fund. A lot smaller amount and through the hazmat. And I would be willing to work with him in the summer to make all that happen.
Can I respond?
So that's, I'm done. I'm done.
Thanks, Dave. Yes.
Just, just real quick, I wanna clarify a couple of quick things. And then I'd like Josh to just answer a couple of questions. So the town manager is in, in one of my duties and responsibilities is to develop the proposed budget every year. Um, and that's what I've been doing since two thousand and twenty. Uh, actually, this is my sixth, seventh budget. Um, this year, the select board decided to do monthly meetings. My first opportunity to present the budget was in November, and then a month went by. And that was my second opportunity to review the budget. This year, we had a full budget advisory committee. So I was going to select board meetings to propose the budget. And then after that, I was going to the budget committee and Chris Schress here tonight, um, was on that budget committee. Um, and the budget committee weighs in and gives their input and their feedback on the budget. And then I bring it to the select board. They give me their feedback. And then the next meeting, I worked back through the budget, incorporating all of the public input that I've received, and I proposed the budget again. And as that development process took place, things changed in the budget. I made that very clear in November that that was a draft budget, and then it was a working budget that I was working on still with the budget committee and the town. Um, I try my best to give the highest quality financial information that I can provide, and I believe I did, I believe I did my job just fine. Um, I do wanna say that eight percent does not mean your taxes are going up eight percent. Um, an eight percent increase in the municipal budget does not mean that your taxes are going up eight percent. Um, this proposal was to provide stipends for firefighters. Firefighters that are on twenty-four hours a day, um, that are currently not receiving anything. Um, so all the money that they spend to go out and respond to calls comes out of their pocket. I had proposed twenty thousand dollars, and the budget committee reviewed that, and they said it wasn't enough. Um, and the reason for that is because when you look at this structure here, you're a firefighter and you're responding to a hundred and forty-four calls, right? So you, excuse me, not calls, you've responded a hundred and forty-four times. Let's say there are two thousand responses in total for the year, okay? So this person responded a hundred and forty-four times. That, that person responded to seven point two percent of total responses, alright? When that happens, under my initial proposal, that person is only gonna get five hundred and forty dollars for responding to a hundred and forty-four responses. So the budget committee seen that and they were like, hey, you know, we think we should actually move that up a little bit. That when we respond to a hundred and forty-four responses, we're getting a stipend of two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. Which is still, it's enough to cover your gas, it's enough to cover, um, your times. Maybe not your time, but some of your expenses. Um, I'd also like to mention that under this proposal, eighty thousand dollars. I based this on the average house in Weathersfield, which is valued at two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So the tax implication on passing this article is sixty-eight dollars per year, which is five dollars and seventy-three cents per month. For a dollar thirty-two per week on the average home, um, to get firefighter stipends. I'd like to pass it over to Josh Duffin. He, he knows a lot more about the day-to-day functions of the fire department. Um, so, uh, obviously, Ms. Fuller has, um, some concerns on the structure, um, of what's being proposed. Um, and on how to pay for the structure. Um, and he is correct, the last, our last committee meeting, um, that he was in attendance with, um, it was talked about, uh, hazmat billing. Um, so the background, I'm gonna just kinda go over the background of what we're actually talking about. This is only referring to motor vehicle accidents um, involving, um, vehicles and or, um, heavy truck trailers, heavy equipment, um, either on town road, state road, interstate. Um, so over, over the past uh, twenty years, um, the, actually, I'm gonna say the last twenty-five years. Um, both departments have, have done this billing. Um, and both departments have received funds um, for, for this billing. And back, um, back twenty years ago, um, we, the department's, uh, allocation amount of money that we are getting, um, which I believe rate was cheap, you were two thousand and two thousand and six to two thousand, eleven. Um, at that time, the department was receiving two thousand, five hundred dollars for our total allocation to operate the department. That's it. Two thou, uh, twenty thousand, five hundred dollars. So we had to, between fundraising, um, which both departments at that point did tremendous amount fundraising, along with billing, billing for these accidents to help um, cover the operation expenses. So we're gonna kinda fast forward up a little bit. Um, within the last five, seven years, uh, realistically, I think when Brandon came in, um, you know, the board, um, had, we, we had a study done, John Woods' report. Um, there is, um, there is stuff in that report that was at that point, at that time, um, an eye-opener. Um, it was a outside, it, it, it kinda was referred to as the bible of the fire department. Um, again, the town hired someone to do a study. This is that person's opinion of the data that he collected of the conversations between both departments of how he operated and compiled it into this report. There was, and in the report, if you read it, there's pros, there's cons, there's ways we can do better. Um, and, uh, over, I think that was done seven years, six years ago. John Woods, seven years ago, I think. Don't recall. Um, but from there, um, we Don't recall, but from there, we, you know, both departments have. Have made changes. We've, the town had, from that report, I I would say the very first thing that came out of that report. Was the amount of time that both departments were were putting into fundraising. To help cover the cost. To operate the departments. And I know Mr. Fuller has said this very several times that. That. He strongly feels that the town needs to cover the cost of how to operate. And to help relieve the members of both departments on fundraising. And that has happened, that that we have, we have drastically reduced our fundraising. In order to. Lessen the time that we're asking of our members. And. Have more time for family, but also what is important, and that is to. Answer the nine-one-one calls. And make sure that we're trained. To answer those calls. So within definitely the last five years, we have done that. So. From the last five years. Back to the hazmat portion of this money. It is, it's, it fluctuates every year. Some years, we might have. One major accident involving a tractor trailer that we are there from three to ten hours. Another year, we might have three. So. The flow of. Relying on those funds. Can fluctuate dramatically. On top of the last five years. We have, and I have done the billing for our department for the last. Fifteen years, probably. In the last five years. I have. Given up on doing that billing. Because of the time and energy that it takes to track down that money and to hassle the insurance company to get paid. On top of. Again, we're not having as many of those accidents. And I believe in that meeting, in our commission meeting, we we did talk about that, and I believe we had one.
Yeah, I believe that was just one.
So it's it's very hard to, for us to to utilize that, and I'm sure there is. There is, I'm not saying that there isn't departments throughout the state that are, that are. Doing the billing and not doing the billing. But for us to try to. Rely on it to help on what we're requesting for the Articles, Article seven would would be very hard to do.
Could I interrupt for a second? Could I suggest that you just got put at the spot, right, with this idea?
No, it was, we talked about it in our last committee, committee meeting.
I was, I was thinking it might be better to have a, you know, run numbers, so then we're looking at numbers. Because right now, we're not going to change what's. Right, we're, we're voting on. But having those numbers for town meetings is likely going to be important. Because that'll give you a picture of how many accidents, what what kind of dollars, like, I don't have a clue, what what that insurance, how that would work. Because I mean, I mean, I agree with Dave, capturing, like, if there's money there that we can be capturing, and there's a way to do it, that makes. Sense, right, to increase revenue was.
It would be, it's, it would be easy enough for us to give. The last several years of what we've had for accidents and what would have been billable.
Like, it's your average, but I think, yeah, that would make sense when you think about budgeting.
So the last part of, before I ask Chief Compo come up. We brought this up five years ago. Two thousand nineteen, I believe it was. Six years ago, so. Of us. Merging to one single department. With two stations, that was the intent. Back then. That is the sole intent of where we're at now, that is what we just signed for the MOU. And. Our, our intent. There is, there is some members, not going to lie, there is some members. Within the fire service in our town that do have questions. On moving forward. But as far as the chief officers. That operate the department. And among my whole department. Feel that this of what we're trying to accomplish is, again, the best thing to do. And hopefully, we, the people that have concern of moving forward. Will will realize of what we're trying to do. And 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 get on board with this, because this is a good thing for our town. To to take and do. Do you want to just stand speak on?
Thank you, thank you, Josh. Chief, thank you, Josh.
Following our February fifth committee meeting held here. Brandon approached the committee. That he wanted to do a memorandum of understanding prior to the town meeting. Correct me if I'm wrong, that special meeting was on February twelfth where we reviewed that?
I believe so, yes.
Want to make sure we're correct. I believe we reviewed that on February twelfth. On February eleventh, the Ascotney Fire Department held its. Normal monthly meeting. Where this, this was discussed. And a vote was held to sign the memorandum of understanding. As long as the three members on the committee agreed it was in the best interest of the department. We we had not reviewed it yet. That was the vote. It passed with one abstention, otherwise it was, it was unanimous. There were no nay votes at that meeting. We reviewed the memorandum of understanding. That you have in front of you, which was signed by all six committee members. And as a, as a member of both departments, we asked the town to support this article on on town meeting day or on voting day.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions?
I have one more thing. I I do agree that we should be capturing any outside revenue outside of local tax dollars. So the hazmat revenue is something that we will look into. And as soon as we can get a handle on. How much on average, I mean, I think what I heard Josh say is that this is money that's fluctuating, fluctuating every year. So if the money is fluctuating. How can you really get a handle on? How to budget for it? You you can't budget for, like, hey, there's going to be a car accident, you know, on June fifteenth. This is something that may or may not happen. So I don't think it's a reliable enough, but when it does come in, it should be a revenue, and it should offset our expenses. And in the following year, we can use it to lower taxes and fund balance like we do every year.
I just wanted to add to that, that from, from what the the chief said. That it sounds like there's a huge amount of work that goes into securing those funds, and I think part of the calculation should be a sort of a cost benefit. A calculation of, yeah, we can get this money, but how much is it costing us to secure that money, and is it? Is it ultimately worth it? I'm not saying, I don't know enough about it to say, yes, it is, no, it isn't, but I think that needs to be part of the. The the reckoning on the whole thing, because it does sound like it takes a huge amount of time to. To secure that, whatever money is available.
I I think it's important to note, I'll come right over to you, Colby, in a second, I think it's important to note that. Boy, we've had a lot of years of. Contentious relationships. For lack of a better way to put it. And. We have the agreement. Signed by both departments, that they're, they're trying to work together on their own to bring. This together and make it work. And and Dave, I think it was your, your point you made, that politicians weren't the ones that were going to do it. I've stayed out of it. And the, and the fire departments are doing it with the town manager. I I've been to meetings, I. I gave them some encouragement, but they created this, not us. And I I think it's a good step forward. Is it complete? I I don't think it is. I think we know it isn't. But that was part of what I heard at the meetings I went to was that this is going to take some time to transition and 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 bring it all together. And I think we just give them a chance to do that. In regards to the eighty thousand dollars for stipends, I've always been against stipends right up until this year. And the first presentation, as Dave pointed out, was for twenty thousand dollars. It came back from the budget committee at eighty thousand dollars. I was, I was, what? Are you insane? But exactly this happened, this presentation happened, and I listened, and and I also listened to fire. Fires that are spending way more than five hundred and forty dollars on equipment. That they need just on their vehicles to do this, lighting, in some cases, et cetera. Most of them are self-employed, they lose work, they don't get, they don't, that's not recovered.
Colby was first.
Just a quick comment, it's gotten me fired years ago, probably ten plus years ago.
Can you go to the mic?
Thank you.
We literally, you can't hear it online.
Colby Hodgson has gotten you fired. I'd say probably seven to ten years ago, it was getting you fired, did bill for the hazmat stuff, and we used an outside company that was just a flat fee. So the more, the more money they got from the insurance company, the more money they made. That's it.
Chair, chairing the budget committee, Chris was on the budget committee with me. We went through some of the same struggles Mr. Fuller went through. And ultimately, those with extensive experience working with firefighters. Came upon the eighty thousand option that was listed, and it was probably in the middle of the whole spectrum. And so the only comment I wanted to share is that for the budget committee. When we advised you on the select board, one of the options was that it be a special article, which means the voters would decide. And I, I, I think that was a good, a good solution. Because the voters are going to make a decision on awarding stipends to firefighters with the fiscal year starting in the summer. Merging into a municipal structure, that may not happen instantly. So even though if that eighty thousand is approved, it might take a little while to work and get the kinks out. But ultimately, for me personally, as both a member of that committee and a resident. I've looked at what the police department does and what highway department does in terms of public service and also public safety. And we're compensating other departments for parallel types of work. Where they're essentially, they're they're risking their lives when they respond to a call. What, whether it's the highway department out there plowing in hazardous conditions. Or the fire department responding year round in hazardous conditions. So the, so for me personally, as a taxpayer and as a member of the budget committee. If if we don't have a strong recruited and retained fire, fire department force, we've got forty-three uniform firefighters, I believe, in town. The worst things can happen. We've, we've seen. Departments in this area of southern Vermont that are struggling to keep their doors open. And so we're, we're in a situation where it's really going to have to be the taxpayers to decide, do you take, I hate spending an extra dollar of taxpayer money, hate it. But is eighty thousand dollars spread across the town to start a fund for stipends? Is is that the insurance? I would never call it an investment because you're spending the money. But is it the insurance to mean that we have a fire department that can rapidly respond and might save a life? And then the, the second piece of it, which is real short. Merging into a municipal department means there's going to be efficiencies gained. So when I think you add Mr. Fuller's recommendations and thoughts, which I think are spot on, which are recouping money. Whether it be fees for doing burn piles, burn permits, recouping hazardous fees. The extra duties of the leadership in the fire departments, that might be part of their duties, is is pursuing that recovery of funds. But also the efficiencies, when you have one department and you combine training, or there might be some net fielding of equipment that you only have to do one time. Throughout the whole department. I think that's, that's a question mark. So the voters have to decide, do we, do we bless off an eighty thousand for this year? Evaluate the following year, and the select board will approve a new budget. Thanks for your time, Mr. Chairman.
We done with that?
No.
No. Okay. So this is going to wrap it up right here, though.
In that.
The rest of it can be done at town meeting. But go ahead.
Well, but this is, you know, this is part of the problem that I've had all year, where this is the time where you'd be like sausage making. These kinds of meetings are the ones where we air our differences, and shutting off just doesn't work. It just doesn't. And and that's part of the problem, the new board's going to have to go forward with a different path, I think, where if you have a lengthy discussion, you're going to have another meeting about it. And without a decision. At that February fifth meeting that I attended, there was a list of nineteen questions that were posed, and Mr. Murray was sitting right next to me, and he didn't know this. I don't know whether anybody knows this. I know that the departments know it. Both firehouses are sitting on unlanded land. The town does not own the land underneath either building. There are some, there are some things in town that are very strange. In this building, Clarence Martin gave it to the town with a restriction, you can't have anything to do with the school in it. The town forest off of Thrasher Road, three hundred acres. Any proceeds from lumber and timber up there have to be forwarded to the swimming Edgar May Center. It's in the deed. It was accepted by the town. These strange things have got to stop. The gifts, the gifts that come to us need to be unconditional.
I'm totally with you there.
The Clarence. The Robinson family gifted the ground underneath the West Side Station to. The new fire department that it formed when it moved from Center Street. There are three founding members that are still alive. I've been all through this with Brandon. It might not be possible to transfer the land underneath them. I've heard that some people of the Robinsons are no longer alive. There's got to be a legal process. You can't just magically say, oh, it's our land and claim it. That doesn't happen. So this point, and and the the Scottney one is owned by the state of Vermont. I think that one's probably a little easier to transfer. Those things got to get in line before. Even the thought process of having a town municipal department. So some of these things need to work out before. It's a legal, the legal proceedings. The one thing that bothers me on these. The story here just got twisted by the speakers, I felt, because this isn't the need for this kind of thing. It's a different revenue stream. That's my point. Property taxes, as we saw in the last election, are too high. The school budget, which is. With our tax bill, you can't separate these out. If you look in the town report, it's headed for ten point five higher. When you combine that with the towns, we're all looking at a nine percent on average tax increase. The thing that bothers me even with combining both firehouses and like. The staff, there's some questions at the Ascotney. Remember that the West Side is ten miles away. And so. When you keep your eye on the nine-one-one call. How how does it serve something? I mean, we don't have an ideal world. We don't have one firehouse sitting up at the Zigman property. Where where it's like five miles apart from each town, each of our. Sections of town where the accidents are. But I'm not sure how this all worked out, but there's some technical things, there was nineteen questions, which I'd never seen before, about how does it affect, what about the nonprofit funds that have come in? Do they have to be given back? Or or are they, I don't know, there's some things, like, a lot of things got moving parts. That's it.
So this is a transition. And during a transition, there's going to be questions that need to be answered, and that's what, that's what we've been doing. We created the Fire Department Committee. The Fire Department Committee contains both fire chiefs, both deputy chiefs, and I believe a captain and a lieutenant. Or, excuse me, a member of the Ascotney Fire Department, I think it just recently changed a little bit. But we, we sit right here in this room, and we go through these questions. We collect feedback. We collect feedback from both fire departments and then come back to the table and discuss it. There's questions that need to be answered. Um, and that's that's what a transition does. We have two fire departments with two chiefs and we're looking to create the Weathersfield Fire Department. And have one fire department typical of all of our surrounding towns. Um, that provides fire services for the town of Weathersfield. The West Side Station is on the Perkinsville side. It's perfectly situated to deal with fire. Department issues in that area. And then we have a station on this side. So we're looking to keep both fire stations. We're not looking to eliminate one. I think that's the consensus is to keep both. Um. I'm not sure that I agree that because there's unanswered questions, we don't give stipends to firefighters.
Anybody else want to respond? The board questions?
Move to convene the Weathersfield, what, the liquor? Let's all have a drink.
There any exceptions? Move to accept.
Oh, you know, I'd like to make one comment before you two walk out the door.
We have any hearts?
I just want to.
Hold on, can we have, could I have an order in the room for just one second?
Go ahead, Rika.
I just want to congratulate the two fire departments and the town manager. For getting this far with this process after all these years. I think it's just fabulous. And I'm 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 proud of you all. Now you can go.
Okay.
She, hey, oh, we're still on. I better not.
All right, back to Dave's motion.
She's she says she had something under her desk.
I'm sorry.
At least we can have a good time.
Pirouette out of control on earth. Okay. Item eight on the agenda, second class liquor license. Um, I really apologize. I've I've coming off of flu and I'm still not fully recovered. I'm not contagious or ought to have a mask on. Um. Do I hear a motion to approve second class liquor license for Global Montella? DBA Jiffy Mart number four six six in Ascotney. And Glo- and and B Global Montello DBA Jiffy Mart number four three seven in Perkinsville. Do I hear that motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the second class liquor license for. Uh, the the two entities listed, they are both Global Montella. Uh, DBA Jiffy Mart, one located number four six six in Ascotney, one number four three seven in Perkinsville. Any further discussion on the motion?
Just making sure we haven't had any complaints or any.
Nothing.
No. No complaints.
Oh, good. All right, any further discussion?
Second classes beer and wine or what's second class?
Yeah, what second glass beer and wine? I don't know, but that's what Dave was talking about. Olivia over there.
Yeah, never know.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of the second class liquor license for Global Montella DBA Jiffy Mart? Number four six six, number four three seven, Ascotney and Perkinsville respectively, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tobacco license. So it's the first one is not tobacco, it's just liquor, just beer and wine.
This one's like tobacco, cigarettes.
So tobacco license, uh, do I hear a motion to approve the tobacco license? This is item number nine on the agenda. Global Montella DBA Jiffy Mart number four six six in Ascotney, Global Montella DBA Jiffy Mart number four three seven in Perkinsville. Do I hear that motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion is made in second to approve the tobacco liquor licenses for the above mentioned, uh, businesses, number four six six and four three seven. Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Same thing, no problem, Brandon.
No problem, nope.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve tobacco license, Global Montella DBA Jiffy Mart number four six six and number four three seven, Ascotney and Perkinsville. Respectively signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Number ten, certificate of compliance, town road and bridge standards and network inventory. Uh, when I reviewed that, there was a date that was off. Did that get corrected? Um, it made reference to the, um. The actual. Signing of the, um, standards.
That's right.
And it was in two thousand nine and I believe in in the in here it says twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five. So we just need to correct that date in it right, uh, it's page fifteen and forty-four in the packet. And it says July sixteen, twenty twenty-five. It should say July sixteen, twenty oh nine, two that twenty oh nine, I believe.
No. Oh, I see. I I see what you're saying. Yes, yes. You're right, Mike. Okay, we'll make that correction.
Okay. You you see that signature on, uh, page nineteen of forty-four. It makes that's that's when the policy was signed. And it indicates that date, July, um.
Good catch.
Two thousand nine. Well, twenty twenty, we ain't got to twenty twenty-five yet. Can't possibly have that. Just saying. Okay, so, uh, any discussion, uh, let's see, we need a motion on the, um. To accept, uh, to to, or we just sign off on this?
Yep.
So there we don't really, just any discussion, any changes, requests?
Right. Do you want to speak on behalf of this?
This is part of the annual packet from the state of Vermont, saying that you are in compliance of all standards, or you try to be, or you do, you you've signed off that you will be. Um, so you can get state aid and funding and grants. The other one we're going to get is the mileage certificate, but it wasn't ready yet. Um, that's just the annual, these are class four, class three, class two, hundred miles we have in road. You sign off on it to. Show them that the maps are accurate. So that'll be coming at the next meeting.
Ray, is there any reason we wouldn't sign off on this?
Uh, only if you didn't want money from the state.
Just making sure, you know, you're the other person who knows if it's.
Yeah, we don't need any.
True or not.
Yeah, okay, so we, uh, do are we vote on any action on this? I don't I don't believe we do. I think we just signed the the document when it when it's when it's ready, correct?
Yeah, you're certifying that you have adopted standards, um, which the town does. And further certify that we. Do have an up-to-date highway network inventory, which identifies location, size, deficiencies, condition of roads, bridges, causeways, converts. And highway-related retaining walls on class one, two, and three town highways.
My question would be the signing of this certificate or acceptance of this certificate. Uh, and this is a policy that was put together in two thousand nine. So are, I I I'm really struggling with, uh, you know, what are we going to do? We are we going to vote to certify this?
I would what you need to do. Vote to certify this.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made, uh, and seconded to certify compliance with the town road bridge standards. Any discussion on the motion?
Can can you plug in like today's day, so you don't pre, you don't forward it to July sixteen, twenty twenty-five? Wouldn't it be, wouldn't it be smarter to just say as of today, that's what the standards are? We're we're clear for that? Is that?
Well, in the statement that that referenced, Dave, it's it's referring back to that, um. Uh, those policies and standards that were passed and adopted by the Select Board on that date.
Uh, well, that was on June fifth, two thousand nineteen, but I'm talking about the date ahead of that.
No, no, it's it's July sixteen, twenty, it says that in here, it says July sixteen, twenty twenty-five. Our date will be. Is that what you're saying?
But no, what I'm saying is, shouldn't we say we the body adopt it today, which is, you know. Not July sixteen, twenty twenty-five, because that hasn't happened yet.
No, because the roads and bridges standards were adopted by the Select Board on July sixteenth, two thousand and nine. We're just certifying we're in compliance with those standards.
Right. I think he's talking about the July sixteen, twenty twenty-five date that you already brought up.
It's been changed on the document.
It's, yeah, yeah, it's it's fixed.
Nice.
Thanks.
I'm reading my computer.
I had one more, one more question. Uh, I had just one more question there and that is, uh, who signs this, this certificate? Or or is it just this vote by the board in the record in the minutes?
Posted to, I'm gonna amend the motion to let the chair sign on behalf of the board.
That that's where I was going, Dave. Is it the whole board or just me that's signing?
There's five lines.
Yeah, there's five lines for the board. I I think we need at least three.
Traditionally, it's been the entire board.
Yeah.
It says duly authorized representatives of the town.
It wasn't seconded, so it doesn't, doesn't matter. We didn't quite get there. We're moving kind of quickly now.
Aye.
So, okay, so there is a motion to, um, uh, certify the compliance, uh, and it has been seconded. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, so the board will sign that one in this writing slot.
Yep.
Uh, future agenda items. Uh.
Could I ask that we do that, the open meeting law training and the code of ethics training at the reorganization meeting? I think it would be appropriate to set the stage, especially after these last two meetings.
I'm I'm not sure it can happen like that, Nate. I I think there there's probably a lot more time required for both of them.
I I guess I should say, if possible, right, if, you know, I I don't, uh, it seems worth asking the question of them.
I we have, I I think what we can do is we can we can send out the open meeting law for people to review. So that as they sit down, they have a a a idea of what's going on. But I think when it comes to that training. Um.
Don't forget, we do have an open meeting law enforcement officer.
You do?
Olivia Savage.
Oh, oh, the police.
So she can do that training, probably at the reorganizational meeting, if you want to do it then.
I think it makes sense just, you know, to start the year off, right? New board, reorganization, do the training as soon as possible. It would, to me, if possible, doing at the reorganization meeting makes sense.
Yep.
Uh, you know, if we can't, you know, whether it's in-house, I mean, uh, I I do think we need a formal training by by the Vermont. Big of cities and towns, and I think that's really important.
And and I'm just saying, I think that that's the one I'm talking about. I think it's going to be probably at least a couple hours for each one of these.
I I'm kind of, oh, I don't want a four-hour meeting, but I'm okay with at least.
I don't think that's a meeting. I think that's something we that that we set up with V L C D T and we go ten. I don't think that's an open that a meeting for us.
I I I think the municipal code of ethics training is like, you have to go somewhere to that training. So it's not something we can provide, we can provide the municipal code of ethics at the meeting.
I'd be surprised if it wasn't offered online.
What was it?
I'd be surprised if something wasn't offered online.
Probably, we could.
I guess, Brandon, my my point is, I think it's better to do it as a board, invite the other, right, the other commissions.
Right.
So that everybody's on the same page, everybody's interpreting it the same way, so we don't get in these these kind of, uh, problems, right? Uh, and that we all have the same foundation. So that's why I would rather do it much sooner than later. Um, and, uh, I think it it's worth, uh. Figuring out if it costs a little bit of money, it's probably not going to be much, right? Like, I think it's worth it. Uh, that's.
We 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 kind of already decided we need to do it.
Well, one of the, you know, I'm not in there, but one of the things that DeForest brought up was this is very valid. So the warnings. Which I never would think the chairs are required to do. I think really that's an office responsibility, just to work with that. But they don't have access to the town website. And 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 when you have a town website, it it you're required to post this in three. Public places, both usually at the town office and at the both post offices, and then the town website. But if the chairs don't have access to the website, I don't necessarily want them to, because that's with much more traffic. That's the point she raised before.
Well, many of the committees do have access to the website.
So I'm not sure, I'm not sure we want to get into that. Right now, that's, I think that's.
To get there.
Yeah.
Um, I I do want to point out that, uh, I think it's Act one seventy-one, which is the open meeting law. Uh, starting in January requires all boards of all chairs, uh, at all chairs of all boards and commissions, committees, et cetera, in town. Must take training on the open meeting law within one hundred and twenty days of their, um. Uh, appointment as chair of the board, so.
Their sentence.
They, yes, that's that changed. That's all new, but, uh. And 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 I agree with you. I I want something, at least some kind of presentation for our 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 first meeting to get us kind of. On 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 at least the basics.
Yeah.
Uh, so that so that we're good there. I I don't disagree with you. I just I just know that the formal training is going to be pretty extensive. I've been to some of these. Dave and I drove to one up Mount Thayer together. It was all day. That was that was budget stuff, but anyway. Some of some of the history. We had a good time that day.
That was very good. John Hall, no, who was the guy? Who was the, who was the, uh, finance guy?
Bill Hall.
Bill Hall.
Rika?
It's eight o'clock. Could we hustle along, please?
I have been.
Nine o'clock, actually.
It's nine o'clock.
I have been.
Most do accept the warrants, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five payroll, general fund, twenty thousand, two forty-five, forty-three. Operating expense payroll, twenty-eight thousand, five forty-six, ninety. Highway fund payroll, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and ten cents. Highway fund operating expense, fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. Solid waste payroll, two thousand, two hundred and five dollars and thirty-one cents. Solid waste operating expense, eighteen thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-six cents. Library payroll, two thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. ARPA fund distribution operating expense. Fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars. Um, grand total payroll, thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. Grand total operating expense, seventy-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-three cents. Done.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in this, seconded to accept the warrants. Any discussion on the warrants?
Yes, on the on the on that distribution of ARPA, Brandon, is that like, are we getting close to the end?
Um, so so we do have until the end of twenty twenty-six to fully expend the funds.
Okay.
We just had to obligate them by the end of last year.
But what was, this was for the town garage? What was done with it? What was this for?
I believe this was.
Generator?
That looks like generator to me.
Wouldn't you know, he left.
I'll get there in a sec.
Here he goes.
Hey, hey, Ray, it's about fourteen thousand for the generator at the highway. The, ring a bell?
Fourteen thousand for the generator?
That's actually, uh, the Hoyzington Fields Master Plan project.
Oh, that was for Hoyzington Field?
Yep.
Say, how you liking that generator? I'm going to get a heater on it for the winter. I have a hard time starting.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, Tom?
That was it?
Wow, motions have been made, the motion has been made to approve the warrants of February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, approve the warrant, signify by saying aye.
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 Other business is to, uh, set the date and time of the, um, I'll call it the reorganizational meeting of the Select Board. Um, I'll wait there. Actually, it's been a meeting. That'll be Thursday. What's the date on there?
Sixth.
Six. Thank you. Um, Thursday, the sixth, what time, everybody? Six-thirty? At Brent Memorial Hall. And that'll be the reorganizational meeting of these one and one. Uh. Here, will there be any warrants that you can think of, Brandon, or anything like that?
Um.
Any other business? It'll be about the only other thing on there. This is generally a very short, focused meeting. We need to keep it short and we get it done. And and if people need to, you can, we we can set it up so it can be, um, online soon. Uh, if it's difficult, because it is a short meeting, it's. Well, I I probably will stay with that, you know, ten minute meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
Do I hear a second? Motion's been made in second to adjourn. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We are adjourned.